We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order.
Reporting in progress.
We'll call the meeting to order at 6:31 PM. First on the agenda is to adjust the agenda. Has there any adjustments to the agenda? Okay. Here, citizens. Do we have anybody on Zoom that would like to speak? Okay. Approved meeting minutes from the October 4th meeting. Does everybody have those?
I don't think, I didn't get an email from no one. I did not get one.
Oh, you didn't? Okay. Well, we'll just do that at the next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. We do have that. I'll put out, they're actually on the town website now is unapproved.
Okay.
So, but that's no problem. Okay. New business review at 250. Oh, nope, that's the wrong one. We're gonna review the changes in the subdivision regulations. Jason Rasmussen is here to go over it. And I made markups based on what we went over. And we could just, what do you think, Jason? Just kind of go through?
Yeah, I think that makes sense. Yeah, we should go through. A lot of them are pretty straightforward and looked good. There's a few that look more like questions we might want to talk more about.
Sure. Okay. So I guess we'll do the first one. I guess Article 2. I think that's where we start with the changes.
Yeah, and there's one on Page 3 that seems pretty, you know.
Yeah, Page 3 is improper.
That makes perfect sense.
Okay.
Yes, I think it makes sense to start in Article 2. There was, under subdivisions, there was a discussion of the minor subdivisions, which are basically no more than four lots in total. And the note here is like to be administrative review, no hearings required. I think we need to flesh that out in more detail. I don't think that's fleshed out yet, right?
Oh, I don't think so.
Yeah, I think, unless I missed it. I went through this kind of quickly. I might have missed it, but I think, yeah, we would want to spell out, you know, who does that and how the process works and those sorts of details. You know, probably it would be, towards the back, there's a discussion of the administrative officer. And I'm not quite sure who that is. But we would spell out what that person does to approve, review and approve these things here, I would say.
Right, right. Would the Mark, would they, any update? Would they possibly be interested in?
I mean, we've done it before and, you know, definitely open to that discussion. We'd have to talk about with the town, how that would work, whether, you know, they think, whether you all want us to do that. And, you know, if there's a cost, whatever.
Sure.
We could certainly talk about that. But we've done that before. We have an MOU with a few other towns where we did that type of thing. So we could do that.
What's an MOU?
Sorry, memorandum of understanding or contract. We could do some legal kind of agreement like that.
Yeah.
And, you know, this may not come up that much.
Right.
On the subdivisions there would be, so we'd kind of be on call and handle it that way. Again, you know, I'd want to talk a little bit more with Rick about what that would look like and whatever. But yeah, we could certainly do that.
Well, that would be great. I mean, I like that idea because it gives some consistency. And it kind of puts us at a little bit.
Arms length, a little bit.
A little arms length, rather than having somebody in town who may not be there.
Yeah. Yeah. And, you know, I think ultimately it would be the select board's call. You know, they would authorize this person or.
That's right.
And so they would probably, we probably want, again, I'd want to talk with Rick, but they would probably appoint us or have a contract through us to serve as that administrative officer. So we want to explore that a little bit.
Would that happen while they are reviewing these after it's been submitted to them?
So I think this would be where, you know, basically if we have an arrangement with the town, you know, let's say it's Chris in our office. Chris would basically be the one to review these minor subdivisions and approve them. And then if somebody appeals that decision, they could come to you. It'd be something like that.
Right.
So would we put this, ask to have this on the agenda of the next meeting for the select board? So that we can finalize it? Because if we can't finalize the wording.
Yeah, I mean, I think, well, maybe, Jason, you could jump in. But I think if we get the draft regulations done, submit them to the select board, not for a hearing, but just for their review, maybe that's when this would come up.
Yeah, I think that makes some sense. I think, I'm thinking that this section 2A here might need a little bit more detail to it. And so I can work on something and get it to Tim and maybe insert it into here. You can get it the next time if you'd like.
Okay, we're still on Section 210, 2A.
Yeah. My two cents. Maybe a little more detail in there.
When you say more detail, this is my first time doing this. What are you looking for in this specific section when you say more detail?
Well, I want to, you know, maybe it's in there and I just need to look a little closer. But I just want to make sure there's enough. Like, when we're doing a minor subdivision, what are we specifically looking at? What does an applicant need to show us to get an approval? I just want to make sure that's clear.
Okay.
You know, and again, maybe it's spelled out enough. I want to look at it a little bit more.
Okay. All right. I guess, applications, is that something? Probably, I mean, as we move along, once we finish this draft, should we be kind of developing an application and all that stuff?
Yeah, I think an application form would be needed. And I think this next section under 220.
Oh, yeah.
Fleshes that out.
Yep.
But we would need a form that has that, has blanks for all that type of information.
Do you know of any town that has an application form existing in their subdivision process already?
Yeah, and we wouldn't start from scratch. So, yeah, we, I'd look at, you know, what does Ludlow have? What does Weathersfield have? Yeah, we can look at a few examples. And then we'd want to modify it to make sure it addressed, you know, is the same as this section 220. But, yeah, we'd start with an example like that. So, you know, since we're looking at, we started with Weathersfield. Maybe we'd start with their form and see if that would work for you.
Sure.
Yeah, no reason to reinvent the wheel. I guess we have here under 220 application requirements. I mean, that looks pretty straightforward. The only thing I was maybe thinking we might need is in a butter notification form as part of the application.
Okay, yep. Yeah, we could, I have to see what I can find, but yeah, I think a sample form or a.
Sure.
Letter template type thing, something like that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And going under I, existing and proposed elevations, contour lines within sight. Could we use, like, could applicants use like LIDAR or Vermont Center for Geographic Information? Basically, open source mapping to.
I would imagine that they would.
Yeah.
And in most cases, it's surveyors doing this type of thing.
Sure.
And they use that.
That's right.
They use the open source stuff all the time. So, and, you know, I have to, honestly, I have to reread some of this again. But, yeah, if there was an opportunity for an applicant to do some things, they could do, they could use these open source mapping programs to do some of this stuff anyway.
Because, I mean, it doesn't have to be like two-foot contours and.
No, but you can even get that in some of these now.
Yeah, one foot, yeah, it's crazy.
Yep. There was a note down here about add specifications on street and public area lighting.
Yeah.
So would that be in pretty much the village areas, generally speaking only, or?
Well, yeah, I was thinking just like streets and public areas, not necessarily people's houses, lighting on their houses. And the reason, I don't know if people have noticed, but we've got new streetlights in Proctorsville. And they're the, really, the LEDs. And it's so much better because I had one right down from me. And it, just the quality of light is a lot better. And, you know, with new research now, they're saying for like, for birds, you know, when they're migrating, it's a lot better for them. They can find their way. And it's just, I think it's easier on people's eyes. It's just better quality of light, so. But I think it's, we don't want to like make people do it on their houses. We could encourage them, but, I don't know. I don't want to get too detailed, but.
Yeah, their electric bill will encourage them.
Yeah.
If nothing else.
Yep.
Their electric bill will encourage them.
But there's, with the Night Sky Initiative, they have specs on, you know, basically like.
Downcast.
Downcast and, you know, the blue-green lighting. Yeah, I think it's like 2,000 Kelvin tops, which is a blue-green light. So, anyway.
Okay, is there anything else that we want to talk about here?
We've changed the application to be submitted to 60 days. We changed it from 28 to 60 days prior.
Oh, did that not make it in there?
No, it's in there. It's in there, just, yep, just that minor one.
230, number 2. Does that seem reasonable to you, Jason?
It's longer than most towns, but, you know, I think I have to double-check statute. I don't know that there's anything stipulating that in state law. So I think the main thing is you just want to spell it out for folks and allow yourself enough time to, you know, schedule the meeting and process the stuff, so.
I think that was why, partly why we've seen us get some time.
Yep, yep. We'll spend a little more time with it, but I think that's okay. If there's an issue, we'll let you know.
Yeah, you can change it.
I think the idea was more time, which is good.
Sure.
So are we on?
Article 3.
310, 4D.
So, yeah, I think, talked a little bit here about the driveway spacing. So I think that might relate to the work within the right-of-way stuff. And I talked a little bit with Rick the other day about some of this. And I think it'd be good for, you know, just to talk with him and fawn a little bit about some of these things and make sure that we're all on the same page. So we would know, you know, we could spell out what is the driveway spacing based on, if there are requirements.
Sure. And I know the road cut or right-of-way access application sorely needs to be updated.
Yeah.
So I send you that or, I basically looked at Shrewsbury.
You started, wasn't it? No, was it Shrewsbury?
Shrewsbury, yeah. I mean, they call it, any work within the right-of-way.
Yeah, that's right. That was, yeah.
Yeah.
Which is good. I think that's a good thing, so.
Yeah. I think that one's from the 1970s, maybe. I mean, there's a lot of building, I think, for that application.
So I think my original note there was just we should make sure that whatever we do in the subdivision is consistent with whatever the highway department is requiring.
Okay.
So just want to make sure we're talking.
Yeah, maybe before the holidays, we can meet with Todd and Rick.
Yeah.
Get better input and then.
Yep.
Okay.
And he agreed, Rick had agreed when we talked, so I think it's just a matter of time.
That's right.
When he has time, we can try to talk to him, you know? So there was something under 5, bank commission may waive, which makes sense. I think we can waive the landscaping requirements as needed. Is there anything else we want to talk about there?
Well, I mean, it looks.
No, that's fine.
So on the next page, Section 330, I had deleted that because it really, in Weathersfield's, which was our starting point, it relates to their zoning districts. You don't have, so.
Right.
I struck that. On the next page, there's emergency services. So what they do in Weathersfield again is they basically look for a letter from the police and from the fire departments to basically say, yeah, that subdivision looks okay to us. I think there's a comment here, sheriff, maybe not, but maybe we still do want those from the fire department.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, some, right.
I don't know what people think.
I think it should be thoroughly reviewed by the police and fire for access and for safety.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all part of Act 252.
Right.
You know, so we don't have your own police department. So I guess, you know, one of the questions was, do you want to ask the sheriff who does your policing for you?
Right.
It's fine with me, but I just want to make sure that that's what's worked.
I think they deserve recognition for their job and how easy or hard we make it.
Okay, so keep that in there.
Keep it in. All right, yep.
Let's see, anything? Okay, so the next one under utilities, under Section 350. This was talking about streetlights again. So I think, what we were just talking about a few minutes ago.
Yeah, that should, that should be in here, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
It's very nice for you to put this in red. It's very easy to scroll through and.
My printer doesn't do that.
I did it in italics and underline too.
No, it's easy enough for me to read.
Okay.
So if I'm skipping over anything that you want to talk about, please feel free. I think the next one is under Section 370. So this would be under the road, basically the road standards. Number 2 on that next page there. Need to review with Rick and Fawn. So I agree with that. I think it would make a lot of sense to just make sure that this is, this makes, you know, jives with what the town road standards are.
Right.
Give them some input and takes.
One thing I didn't see was maximum grades for the access roads. I mean, I see for the driveways 15%, unless I missed it.
Yeah, that's a good point. I, that's typical that you do have, you know, can't exceed 15, 18%, something.
Yeah.
Something like that.
Well, I know, is it Route 100 going out of Ludlow? That's 12%.
It's in there.
Yeah, so, I mean, I would recommend, like, just for the access roads, no more than 12. I mean, that's pretty generous. Like Manchester, Vermont, they're like 10%.
Yep.
Which is, could be tough to do.
Yeah, 12% is fairly typical in things like this. I think that's probably a reasonable number. It's not always easy to accomplish. There are some sites that are, and that's hard, but, so some towns do have 15. So we can, we can decide what's better.
Okay.
12.
But you know better than I do, so we'll go with 12 for now.
And I mean, I know, and it does, like, if they have a letter from the road foreman and fire department, if it is over 12, saying, yeah, this is okay. You know, the site conditions. But I think 12 is pretty reasonable. Oh, and then I put in, just the British and Road Standards, the Vermont AOT, they have like a detailed sheet that shows you how to do intersections for driving. And just refer to that. And that can actually be included in the right-of-way application. I know that's what other towns do.
Yeah, they have a thing called Standard A76 and the B71.
Yeah.
You know, one's for roads, one's for intersection driveways kind of thing. So, you know, we could reference those. I'd feel better after talking to Fawn about.
Sure.
You know, what does, what's he use and that sort of thing. But, yeah. Anything else on that page?
What's, you missed, municipal roads general permit? I'm not quite certain what that is.
Oh, okay, I wasn't there yet.
Yeah.
Sorry. So there was a reference to the Vermont Better Backroads Manual, which used to be, is that where you are, Tim?
Yeah, yep, yep.
Which one are you on?
Number 8.
Number, um, page 14, what's that?
Yes, page 14.
Okay, so this is where it's talking about drainage and stormwater.
Right.
In the old days, there was this nice manual, this Vermont Better Backroads Manual, which talked about, you know, sort of best management practices for drainage and things like that. It's kind of old and not used so much anymore. And instead, there was this municipal roads general permit. It's a state stormwater general permit that applies to town roads. And so I think the standards for that kind of supersede the Better Backroads Manual. So I was thinking, maybe we should replace that reference with this new thing.
Okay.
I wonder what Wiley Hills grade is. You know?
I don't know.
Gang idea. Just kind of like as a reference.
Right.
Oh, coming off of the White sill side. No, Wiley Hills, one up here. What do we call it now? Is it still Wiley Hill?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I, that's probably 12.
Cuts from High Street down to Center Road. It's a short little road.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's the Y at Whitesville and Center.
Yeah.
Yeah, from that side.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's pretty steep. So I think the next thing is on the, oh, page 15, pedestrian access. And I think there's a note, you know, only in villages. And that was one of the things I was wondering too, is, you know, you don't need pedestrian access in the middle of nowhere necessarily.
Right.
So this is probably in and around the villages, right? So let's see, what else we got?
Section 410, administration and enforcement.
Yeah.
Talking about the administrative officer.
So I don't, I've not really looked at this section yet. I think my initial, my initial, my initial note was that we should review it.
17, page 7.
Make sure, because some things may have changed in state law from when Weathersfield wrote this. And I, I just haven't gotten around to it yet. So I think that would be a next step, is just to make sure it meets all the state requirements.
Okay, is that something your office would look at or?
Yeah, we could, yeah. Just find the time to do it. But, yeah, we'll try to do that reasonably soon.
No, that's fine, yeah.
Other than that, though, was there anything else?
I think we're, we want to kind of get this, once we get it all finalized, we'll distribute it to the select board, but also have like a public forum.
Yep.
Advertise it.
Yep.
And get it out there, get people's reactions before we go to hearings. We're trying to schedule that. We have kind of a busy November. I think we're looking at the flood hazard review hearing, possibly on the 15th of November. Has to be warned. I know we're talking about having the forum then, but it may have to be right before the holidays, if that's.
Okay.
And then, I was talking to Rick about the schedule. He seems to think that it might be a little aggressive trying to get this for a town meeting because, you know, you have the holidays and then that budget season. And then, you know, if a word. So maybe we're a little bit, you are in trying to.
Trying to push it?
Push it.
Yeah, you don't want to try to push it too fast.
That's right.
People get nervous or something.
Yeah, yeah, we want to make sure.
Is it possible to have two meetings? Or is that really unusual if you have a meeting and, you know, people want to discuss it more and so you have another meeting in public?
Oh, hearing, you mean? Yeah, well, the hearing can stay open, so it doesn't have to end it like after one night.
I see, okay.
So they can recess the hearing.
And then continue, okay.
And you can decide to have just a public informational type meeting before doing an actual hearing.
Yeah.
The hearing's sort of that formal adoption step that you do. You could have a meeting beforehand and just, hey, what do you think? You know, this is what we're looking at.
Right.
I like that idea.
Concerns, questions, comments, you know? So, you know.
To just have people aware of what's going on because people have their own lives to live and they're not thinking about us.
That's right.
If you think that's of interest, that could be an option.
Okay.
Yeah, I think so. And then trying to get people to show up for it, right? I mean, we could have it on Zoom. We could put it on the Cavendish Facebook page. I know Bargain's good at that.
Put a sandwich board out front.
Sandwich board out front.
Another one by the fire stations.
Sure. Sure, because I think it's important, you know, people know about it. And then, I guess, then it would actually go for a townwide vote, I believe, yes.
We'd have to double, I mean, state law allows the select board to adopt it.
Really?
Really? It does, but, I mean, the town years ago had, wanted the town plan to go through the full, you know, town vote. I don't think that would, I'd have to look at it again to be totally honest with you, but state laws changed around 2007-ish. So again, we should just double check.
We originally put our first round of subdivision regulations to a townwide vote.
Yeah, that would have been, I think, the process then at that point.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, it was, yeah.
Things changed since.
Yeah, okay.
The town could opt to do it that way, you know?
That would be up to the select board, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, they'd probably want to.
They would.
Yeah.
Yes, they would.
Yep.
Definitely.
Yeah.
So we can, you know, we can spend a little time to review this in a little more detail, perhaps, and get it back to you. And then maybe we could just clarify what the law says about the process.
Okay.
You can lay out those odds.
Okay.
So lucky to have you, Jason.
Yeah, we really appreciate it. And then in terms of like the final reg here, draft reg, would we just, would you guys go ahead and put in your input and then finalize it, type it? Or would you guys?
I think, I mean, it's probably easiest if we just kind of, you know, inserted it into here and then you could look at it and tell us good or not, or, you know, whatever.
That would be preferable, yeah.
It would be quicker on our end and I know it would be quicker on your end, so.
Okay.
We did it.
Take all these changes that we made tonight and then you guys fed us up and.
Kind of add to them as needed or leave them as is, yep.
The proper language and all that stuff.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Fantastic.
And I don't, again, I don't know, Rick might be really out straight. So I don't know if we'll be able to connect on the road standard and the.
Oh, right.
Within the right-of-way thing, but, you know, we could try. He has time.
Yeah.
I came in, day before yesterday to see Rick got something and I said, well, what are you up to, Ricky? He said, culverts. I said, I'm up to my eyeballs in culverts.
Yep, yep. And I think, you know, theme of paperwork is probably going to be his priority. So we'll see what he can squeeze in.
Okay. Do you want to, you want to set that meeting up or do you want me to or just see when he?
I'm okay if you want to, but I'm also okay if you want me to, so let me know.
All right, all right. I'll feel him out, see how his schedule looks.
Yeah, I don't want to overload him, so.
Right.
I know he's, we have another project with him and he'd rather kind of push that out for a little bit more.
Gotcha.
Time, you know, so. Right, it works for him.
Okay. Yep, absolutely. All right. Well, is there anything else on this? Anybody from Zoom world have any comments? Okay.
So do we want to push revisiting this until after the November 15th meeting?
I think so, because you, it's sort of balls in your court now to sort of finalize this.
That would be nice on our.
So probably December.
So probably December, looking at revisiting this in December?
That would work better for us, yeah.
Okay, all right.
If it's okay with you, yeah.
Yeah, that sounds good, because we've been doing two-week, two, two-week meetings for a while now.
Right.
And then we have the November fifteenth meeting coming up.
Mm-hmm.
Holidays, like you said.
Yep.
So just give us enough time, give you guys enough time for helping us out.
Yeah, that, that would be great if, uh, we could do that in December, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yep. Okay, any update on the housing study?
We should have, um, so we reviewed, so the SE group, just as a reminder, the SE group is this consulting firm we had hired to do a housing study for the region. They're looking at our village areas, um, because there's water and sewer. To see what, you know, where's, you know, where are the better spots for housing? So they've, they've built a little computer model that, um, maps out where the water sewer is, and it also looks at where constraints are. And so, so we're, we're excluding a lot of the constraint areas and we're focusing on where there's infrastructure. And so that gives us a starting point. And so we've seen the beginnings of that, and I want to, they're, they're supposed to create basically an online map. So we can show you what it looks like, um, so I'm hoping that becomes available like any day now, so stay tuned, I want to share that with you. And then I think that, uh, the next step is really like, okay, where do you think we got to focus, you know, within those village areas? Are there spots that you think can make really good sense for housing? And, uh, anyway, so that's what we were hoping to do, so soon, I, I hope soon.
Okay. Oh, one other thing, I know Martha had emailed, uh, myself and Rick about updating for the state in terms of when our town plan was approved and all that stuff. Did she ever get that information?
I think so.
Okay, I can reach out to her.
Forget the date off the top of my head, but yeah, I think we got that.
Okay.
Town plan wasn't that long ago. I think we're, I think we're good. I think she got that.
Yeah, twenty sixteen.
Yeah.
And then maybe next year. I know she had gone over our town plan and, you know, updates we should do, but maybe as you guys have time, maybe.
Yeah, yeah, we should talk more about that, especially, you know, working backwards from whenever it expires.
Right.
And forgetting when that is off the top of my head, but.
Okay.
Yeah, I think maybe after we put this to bed, we can.
That's right.
Focus on that one.
Yeah, because that'll be a lot more involved. I mean, the subdivision regs seem the, you know, nuts and bolts and pretty straightforward.
Yeah, the town plan can take a long time.
It can, yeah. So, yeah. All right. I think, does anybody else have anything else for Jason, or?
No.
Thank you, Jason.
Okay.
Release him.
Yeah.
Well, thank you so much.
Happy to come over and good to see you again.
Yeah.
I'm sure you're right, it's getting dark these days.
Yeah, it is.
Right, I know. Okay.
Is Mary back? Sorry, who? Is Mary back in the office?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. She didn't have email. We have, we're having email problems.
I got a letter from, I mean, I got an email saying you didn't have email.
Yeah, we're having some technology issues, but yes, she's, she's in the office.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Nice to see you.
Good night.
Okay, safe travels. Okay. What's next on the agenda? Any new business? Or anybody?
Some, you know, somebody dropped me off a newspaper from nineteen thirty-eight. I just want to show some interesting things on it.
Sure.
You guys, you guys know I'm a flood nut.
Yeah.
I think you figured that out by now. I'll pass it around, but this is a front page from the Vermont Tribune dated September twenty-second, nineteen thirty-eight of the hurricane. That all hurricanes are judged by in New England after the one in nineteen thirty-eight that killed eight hundred people.
Oh, wow.
Really destroyed, um, coastal Connecticut. The western side of Rhode Island and, and other damage, but one of the things is thousands of dollars damaged to Windsor County and flood damage. Springfield and Ludlow hit hard by both floodwaters and hurricane. Flood in Ludlow worse than those of nineteen twenty-seven and thirty-six. Jewel Brook runs wild, damaged town estimated at half a million dollars. Those are third nineteen thirty-eight dollars. Clinton Street Homes evacuated because of high water. So, you know, there's two floods right there that have kind of lost the, the, um, you know, they're not on anybody's radar screen. You know, twenty-seven is a big one. Everyone remembers that was around. Remember seventy-three, and of course, everyone remembers Irene. And everybody's going to remember the one from July, but there are a lot more, including, um, one in, uh, in nineteen forty, nineteen fifty-four, and nineteen fifty-five.
Wow.
And, and the thing, they're not as much of a threat now as they were years ago, but ice jam floods used to really cause problems, because the only way you could, you could take care of an ice dam flood was to find somebody that was willing to walk out on the ice with sticks, you know, and, and.
Clear it.
And clear it, or to throw dynamite at it. But now that you have long-reach excavators that will go out and do it, so they're not as much of an emergency as they used to be.
I still like the dynamite idea.
Yeah. Light it and throw it.
Right.
On the Black River, last winter, there were a lot of ice floes and.
Yeah, were you, were you here when the one was really causing problems down by Macmolding? Were you here that?
I, I don't know that it was causing a lot of problems, but there, I noticed that there were car, almost car-sized ice blocks.
Yeah.
Um, not, not tall, but wide and.
In the field behind your house.
In the field behind the house.
Yeah, that's actually very common.
Okay.
Yeah, that's.
It didn't happen this year.
No, it's usually, usually every five years or so. I've seen it many times.
This was nineteen?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, okay.
I didn't realize that there was that many floods in succession.
Well, that's where they, they started the idea that they could control the rivers for flooding. That's when they built the dam on West Hill in the late fifties. And also Site One on, uh, on Jewel Brook. You know, the, the two impoundments there to kind of hold the water back. They're not, the one in West Hill, for example, is just regulated by a standpipe. There's still valves that they can open and close. And then, of course, the big one was the flood control project on the Black River in North Springfield.
Right, was that in the sixties or?
Uh, fifty-eight, fifty-nine.
Oh, wow, okay.
Yeah, they did, they did the West River, you know, Jamaica, you know, Ball Mountain Dam. They did, uh, Black River. They did the Otto Queche in North Heartland. And they did the Ampaninusik up in, in, um, just north of Thetford. That was another one they regulated. They saved their big one, which was the White River for last, and by then the, um, public opinion changed on them. No one wanted them any longer. Thought that they were disruptive and then they were, in the case of Weathersfield, Weathersfield was told by, um, Lower Valley, you know, the Lower Connecticut Valley, that the land that they lost to the flood control project, the taxes that the town lost, they would reimburse, and they never did.
Yeah.
They never, they, they just reneged on the, the Connecticut and Massachusetts simply reneged on the agreement. And nobody ever took them to task, to what I understand. The, uh, John Heard's book on the history of Weathersfield spells it all out.
Yeah, that's. Yeah, well, it's a new reality now. I mean, I know in Ludlow, there, I think there's a few establishments that won't reopen.
Sams.
Will that be a car wash?
I don't know. I don't know what the plans are for that. That's rumored, but I don't know.
Wait, Sams?
Yeah, it's not going to reopen as a restaurant.
Oh, amazing.
I don't know whether the Subway will ever reopen.
Yeah, I think so. It doesn't have any, not there. Doesn't look like it. Okay. I think we've covered new business.
Old business.
Old business. I think, uh, Jason, we took care of that. Any other comments from the planning commission? Okay, uh, motion to adjourn?
That's a move.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, motion is passed.